Okay, City of Forest Park Council Work Session will be called to order at 6:45 PM. I have at the scheduled here, I think I have the one item above the line of redevelopment in the city for Kid Coffee, revised project, there will be Councilwoman Herbie and Paul Brown.
Okay, I don't know if this was previously brought to council, but Kid Coffee was looking at bringing a processing, production segment of their company to Forest Park in a vacant building on Waycross. They weren't able to conclude that with the owner, and I guess Paul reached out to them with other possible options, one of which was the Fitworks Building on Witten Road. And they are looking to bring the processing there in the back of the building, and in the front of the building to do a retail operation. They will also include their headquarters, and they will also include like an incubator where they will teach and train people to open up places like this. The, this was brought to the Economic Development Commission with a incentive, and I'll let Paul talk about the incentive because he's probably got those numbers at hand better than I do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbie. Can everyone hear me at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
This is an interesting project. As Councilwoman Herbie mentioned, we couldn't come to an agreement on price for the initial building that was under consideration. You might remember that was a vacant building over in our Northland Business District that's been vacant for a little while. It wasn't that big of a building, it was only about 7,000 square feet, and it was just gonna house their production facility. When that deal fell through, you might remember, part of the reason we wanted to work with Kid Coffee was for them to bring one of their retail operations to Forest Park. So we thought, well, why don't we try to kill two birds with one stone, see if we can burn both projects here at the same time, and see if we can't get the owners to actually invest much, much more in Forest Park. We worked with them for several weeks. We also worked with the owner of the property that happens to be Nyer Properties, so we worked with Dan Nyer at Nyer Properties, to put together a deal that, and also we brought in our friends at Hamilton County to work on an SBA loan for the company. The gist of this is, we went from a $500,000 to $600,000 project to a $1.3 million project by Kid Coffee alone. When you throw in the contributions by the owner, we're probably closer to a million and a half dollar project. This takes a, and obviously a very visible building in our community, and converts it to really a valuable asset. And the way we kind of have been thinking about this project, if you think about, you know, the places that, the brew pubs that are out around town, so Lister Van, Rhine Guy, Smirch First, this is almost like one of those projects, but now instead of alcohol, we've got a coffee maker coming in. So it's a really interesting project, it's a great way to reposition the building. The reason that we're suggesting a revision to the incentive package is, A, we've got a project that is now roughly two to three times larger than what the original project was. Two, we're getting not only the production facility, but now we're getting those other two elements that Councilwoman Herbie mentioned. The training facility, which they actually bring in entrepreneurs who are interested in opening up coffee shops, they will help them by producing their coffee for them, and then they actually teach them how to market their own products. So in addition to marketing Kid Coffee products, they also do coffees for a number of different small shop owners around the Midwest. They also do coffee for Jungle Gyms, and for tire discounters and other companies. So this is a really nice company to be bringing into the community. It's an interesting project. What we're recommending is we go from the original $5,000 incentive to a $35,000 incentive. Now, recognize, we're getting additional elements with this project. We're getting a much larger project. We're converting a building over in the Promenade Shopping Center area, which if you remember, the Fitworks Building is actually a separate owner from the Promenade Shopping Center. Those are two different owners. However, by attracting this investment on the Fitworks property, we think this gives us some momentum to do something with Promenade down the road. So you have all of those elements coming together, you've got the Entrepreneurial Center, you've got the retail operation, you've got a vacant building that we can convert quickly at a key court place in our Witten Road corridor. You know, if you think about the momentum that this gives us, we'll have our one and a half million dollar project here, we've got the two and a half million dollar, the three million dollar project going on at Forest Park Square in Kroger across the street. All of a sudden, we've got a couple of nice bookend projects on Witten and West Kemper that should help us attract some new investment. We're doing this at a time really when the market is kind of down. So I think that this gives us a really good opportunity. We're probably putting a little more into this project than we might typically, but I think one of the reasons we're doing it is it checked all the boxes. It has a building, a building that's a target of our redevelopment program. It's bringing an element in that we've been trying to attract. We've been trying to bring coffee, bakery, small restaurant, we've been trying to bring that type of element to our business districts. So this brings that to Witten Road. I think this is a great project. Now, what are we getting for our investment? We're making a 20,000, like I said, a $35,000 redevelopment incentive package in total. 20 of that is a redevelopment grant, so very similar to what we've done for other people who are buying a building of similar size and similar project. The other 15, we are linking directly to, we want facade improvements to the front of that building. We don't want this, even with a great operation, we don't want people to drive by this building and come across and go, oh, it's the old Fitworks building. We want them to look at this building and for it to appear, you know, a brand new operation, a brand new gateway into that Witten Road corridor. We want to set the standard with this building. So we're actually linking our dollars there to an investment by the property owner to renovate the facade of the building. That may be in bringing in some outside seating, you know, really dressing this up. We want this to not be, not only their headquarters, we want it to be their flagship retail location. So, yeah, it's a great opportunity for us, this is a good company. Yeah, I view this as, one of the things that we've tried to look at is how can we attract these types of projects to Forest Park? Seems like we're always following people, you know, a good project happens in one of our neighboring communities, and we try to piggyback on it to bring them in. We think this gives us a chance to set the standard, and other people are gonna be, you know, looking to try to do something that we've been first on the market with. So we're definitely recommending approval. I think this is a great opportunity for us. And, you know, again, we're leveraging a pretty significant investment by both Kid Coffee and also the property owner, who is gonna sell this property to Kid Coffee. It's another reason why we like this project, this is not a lease. Kid Coffee is buying the property.
Oh, wow. Okay, any questions, questions or comments, anybody?
Sounds like a great plan.
Yes.
I didn't catch that they were buying the property. That's really shows a commitment to being here.
Absolutely. And, you know, this is our bread and butter, these family-owned businesses, whether they're manufacturers or small shoppers. I mean, this is our bread and butter. And so this is a way for us to build another relationship that hopefully is like the other family-owned businesses we've got in Forest Park. You know, you can, you all know the list. I mean, the Faxon's, the Kramer's, you know, the testing lab people, all of these are family-owned businesses that started with us and have grown their businesses with us over time. That's what we view this as.
Okay, anybody else, anything else for Paul?
Paul, you might have stated, I might have missed it, but how many, what's the year factor that Kid Coffee has been promoting their product?
It's a good question. Let me see here. I'm looking it up. I don't know if I have that number for you, counselor. Let me check, and I will get that number to you, because I don't wanna say, I don't wanna guess. Whenever I guess, I usually make a mistake. So let me check with you. I can tell you that they've been involved with the business for a number of years. They actually just recently bought the whole enterprise, including the production side of it, and kind of, you know, that's a relatively new piece. But I actually think it makes it a better project for us, that they own, you know, the entire operation, production, distribution, retail. I think it makes it a much more attractive project.
Okay. Paul, any ballpark idea of when this place would be ready to open and running?
I don't know about the retail portion, Mayor. I can tell you that they are looking to start work as quickly as they can seal the deal. We are looking, since they're doing an SBA loan, for those of you who are familiar with the SBA approach, they have a, SBA usually provides 50% of the financing, then you have a private bank that provides 40%, and then you have the owner that provides 10%. What basically it does is it, it kind of gives extra security to the bank to make this kind of a loan, so the bank gets additional security. But then also, the property owner, in this case Kid Coffee, only has to come up with a 10% down payment. So it makes it much more attractive because there's less cash out of their pocket upfront, which they can apply then towards doing some other things they have to do. So that process may take 60 days, give or take, Mayor. So I think we're probably looking at a two to three month period, but I think they want to get this, at least the production side of the operation in before the end of the year. And maybe more, we may see a soft opening of the retail space, but I kind of envision that that might be closer to spring in here, because again, we don't want them just to kind of, you know, throw it in there. We want that flagship store.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, thank you, sir. There are two items below the line. If anyone have any comments on either of those. The first one being Cincinnati Mall Special Assessment, and the second one being Community Development Lanes. Anything from anybody on either one of those? See, if not, I'm going to close the work session, and I think we have about 60 seconds before we actually open the meeting. Is that right, Dana? Okay, call to order, City of Forest Park City Council Meeting Number 1359, August 3, 2020. Let us start with the pledge, and would you, Councilwoman Hope, do us the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you all. Please call to roll.
Brown.
Present.
Herbie.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Sylvester.
Here.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman?
I recommend to excuse Councilwoman Ness.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we excuse Councilwoman Ness. We will make note of the fact when she joins us. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
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 Close. Motion passes. Item two of the minutes, everybody should have got a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We have no presentation for this evening, so we'll go to item four, communication from the public. Mr. Levin Dusky, did we have any, did we get any emails or from anybody from the public?
I have not seen anything, so I think Don would have forwarded it to me if I did, so I do not have anything.
Okay, at this point, we would say that we did not receive any emails or anyone from the public who was to make a statement. If we are in error with that, we would ask that those people let us know, and the, either the assistant, the city manager, or the assistant city manager, or myself will contact those people to get their comments. Right now, we'll move to item number five, reports of standing committees. The first standing committee is the Law Committee, Mr. Brown.
I have no report at this time, or no items to add to the agenda.
So any questions for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, next report is Human Resources Councilwoman Hope.
Just like to let everybody know that the certification commission is on recess for the month of August and September. And also, I would be remiss if I would not acknowledge or mention my good friend, John Lewis. The country has lost an icon, and we were friends back from the 60s in Selma, Alabama, when we were, he was beaten and I was tear gas. But we became very close then, and we stayed friends for quite some time. And I'll say, you know, my heart goes out to the family, and the country has lost a big, small giant. That would conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Think those sentiments would come from all of us. I have no items on the agenda for you for the next work session, which would be September 14th. Do you have anything to put on the schedule?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next report is Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness. We'll come back to her if she, when she comes in. Next committee report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report at this time.
I have no items for you. Do you have any to add at this point?
No, sir.
Next report is Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
Just that I did attend the Economic Development Commission, where we did review the incentive that's going to come before council this evening. And I do want to address Denise, I condolences to you on the loss of your friend.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next committee report is Community Development Committee, and a point of personal privilege on this one. Normally, I would say Councilwoman Moore, but in this case, I am proud to say and announce that Councilwoman Rosalind Moore is now Dr. Rosalind Moore. She just finished her degree.
Thank you.
Now leave aside all of the work that's been...
Oh, yes. Exactly, yes.
Dr. Moore, if you would, your report, if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that I attended a OKI workshop on electric vehicle infrastructures and fleet funding. And part of the workshop was to provide information to organizations regarding upcoming funding for partnerships and opportunity for electric vehicle gas stations, charging stations. And so I will forward that information to the city manager, but I just wanted to let you know that I was on that meeting for that workshop to get information regarding the VW settlement and electric vehicle charging in Ohio, Kentucky in Ohio. That completes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Moore? It's gonna take me a while to...
I know, me too.
And I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
I do not, thank you.
Next committee report is Intergovernmental Relations and Communication, that is my committee. I have no report. I would ask the law director when he gives his report, if you would, Brown, would you let us know what, what's going on with court in terms of meeting dates and times and that sort of thing, if you would, please. Next report being the mayor's report. The only thing that I would have to report would be, I'm sure that by now everybody knows that the, in addition to the standing orders from the, from the governor regarding the social distancing of six feet and the crowd, the gatherings of 10 or less, I guess it went into effect this past week, I believe it was Friday, that bars and restaurants must cease selling alcoholic beverages at 10 o'clock. I would only say to you all that you, I don't know if you have yet, but obviously there are going to be citizens who will either stop you, call you, or report to you that they were somewhere and they were still selling alcohol. If that should be the case, then I would say that you need to report that to the assistant city manager who, and or Dan, who will forward those on to the Department of Health, because they are still the agency that is supposed to be in charge of the enforcement. And I know that also the, I received word from the school board, and Andy, are you going to talk about what the plan from the district, or do you know what, I can tell you what I've been told, but do you have that, do you include that, if you have that information, would you be including that in your report?
I was gonna touch on it. I know Paul knows a little bit about it as well. Just, I just know Wynton Woods is going all virtual, but that's at least the first quarter.
Okay, well, when we get, you would be next, you to the city manager, what I would ask that you and Paul give us whatever information you may have on that. And we, you know, obviously, contrary to what a number of people out there believe, we, the city, do not make those decisions and or rules for the school district, they make their own. That will conclude my report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, we will move to, did I hear Councilwoman Ness? I guess not. We'll move on to item number seven, the city manager's report, Mr. Levin Dusky.
Yeah, I got a few things. We began the 2021 budget process. We're currently attempting to determine the full impact of COVID-19. So we'll have more information as the year progresses, and we'll continue to keep you guys informed. But it's, you know, you got all the unemployment and whatnot, which is not taxable, so income tax is gonna take a little bit of a hit. We hope it's just a one-year thing, but, you know, we'll let you know as it progresses. Along with the 2021 budget, the city is reviewing all the fees, making sure that they're in line with other communities, you know, similar to our size. So this is everything across the board that Don wants to look at. So this will be all department heads and everything. And then, you know, I can touch on, I just want to remind all Forest Park small businesses, the city has established a $50,000 small business assistance program. Paul can maybe touch on this a little bit more, but, you know, it's gonna be in increments not to exceed $2,000. And we'll, we're gonna, he's gonna be forwarding that onto the Chamber of Commerce to let all the businesses in Forest Park know. So, and Paul, do you want to touch on that at all?
We have posted it on our website. We're gonna be posting it on our Facebook page. Like Andy said, we're gonna use the Chamber of Commerce too as a vehicle to try to communicate that out. We're also gonna work with our friends at the Hamilton County to make sure that they can communicate that as well, because they actually have a number of business contacts here in the community. And our goal will be to spread that word as, as fast as we possibly can, so that we can try to get that money in the hands of people that it will help. Mind you, what we're really trying to do is find people that were kind of, not only, they have taken advantage of the payroll protection program and other state, county, and federal programming, but those people that may not have been able to access all of those different programs, because maybe they're much smaller. So we want to try to find the people that really need help, try to target the money towards them. And again, the grant is one portion of it. We can also, as a result of that program, provide expedited and discounted permitting fees. We just did this a while back for one of our Northland companies for a small business, and those permitting fees could be another $600 to $1,000. So, you know, the complete package can really be something that hopefully will have an impact for them, and help them stay in business and kind of get through this period.
Thank you.
And then, and then we're gonna have, we've also, stepping aside from that, we've established a moratorium on most solicitation throughout the city. During this time, the last thing we want solicitors going door to door. So you probably, you may have seen that on Facebook, but Don wanted me to mention that to you guys. And then on the schools, this, this does affect us a little bit. And, you know, beginning the next couple of weeks, the Income Tax Office most likely is gonna be closed to the public. This is caused by the schools being closed and forcing employees with small children to be homeschooled. As you're aware, Wynton Woods, I believe you're aware, Wynton Woods is now, so they are going virtual for at least the first quarter. We only have a handful of employees at this effect, but a couple of them happen to be in income tax, and we already are small staff as it is. So we're probably gonna, we're gonna try to work and create alternate working schedules and whatnot, to see if we can at least get the work done still, while people have that option to, to work from home. So we just won't have the staff at the senior center. That's why we're probably gonna have to close. We don't know for sure yet, but most likely. And I don't know, Paul, if you have anything extra on the schools closing, or is that about it?
We did have a presentation by the superintendent at the Economic Development Commission meeting. She mentioned that there, I think their overall game plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Herbie, but I believe the game plan was for them to try to open virtually in the first quarter, maybe do some type of a blended program in the second quarter, where they have in-school and, and virtual learning, and then maybe try to get back to everybody in-school environment by the third quarter. Now, my understanding, and if I understood the superintendent correctly, was that they were gonna evaluate those decisions that ended at the end of each quarter. And the hope is, by making it on a quarter-by-quarter basis, you can at least provide parents, teachers, anyone involved with some certainty as to what is going to, that the game plan is gonna be. I know some schools districts are still struggling with this, and they haven't been able to tell parents or teachers exactly how they're gonna handle it. I think, I think the, I think the strategy behind it was to try to give people some idea of what the game plan is moving forward.
Any questions from anyone on, to the city manager, and or Paul? The only thing that I would add at this point, I believe this is the case regarding the schools, is that unlike the situation when they, just, just when they first closed schools, when they were doing virtual landing, I believe when they reopen, the staff, including the teachers, will be required to be at school, because there were some concerns among a number of parents of, of the public, I guess, that they were having some problems getting in, you know, contacting those, those folk about lessons and about assignments and those kind of things. So, and I will, Andy or Paul, if you could double check me on this, to get the information. And I believe that their plan does require the employees to be in the building as, as they normally would. One, because with no students there in the virtual learning, it really decreases a great deal the, the risk of contacting the disease, because each person will be in his or her own teaching spot. And the only way they will be coming in contact with others will be when they leave that spot, or if they desire to. Any, anything else for, for the city manager or Paul? Hearing none, we will go to item number eight, other reports, first of those being Mr. Whitehall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Mayor, did you want me to talk about Mayor's Court? Is that what you referred to?
Well, yeah, just, you know, so many people out there will know what to schedule, you know, how, how regularly their meeting and that kind of thing, the times and...
I wasn't sure if you meant Mayor's Court or some other court.
Right.
But for Mayor's Court, we are still first and third Thursday of every month, the third Thursday being mostly a tax court docket. We are running court and exercising social distancing, mask requirement. Everybody has their temperature taken as they, before they even enter the door. So we are up, running. Normally, I would encourage citizens to...
Normally, I would encourage citizens to, if they have a court case, to either see our police clerk prior to court or come to court if you want to contest the case. But if you do fail to come, we are issuing KPSs. And what that does, it puts an automatic suspension on your ability to renew license plates, your driver's license. It means you're now driving on a suspended license, so you don't want that to happen. So even though we do have a pandemic going on, we are practicing our safety skills and court is a safe place for you to come if you are summoned to court. All right, any questions about that before I move on? All right, I did talk to the city manager recently about solicitors coming to people's doors. And we both agreed that, I don't know if he's done it yet, but he's gonna put into full force and effect a, an order that there will be a temporary ban on all solicitation in order to protect all of our citizens from people just showing up at the door. Recently, I also filed a couple petitions in court for unclaimed property and for drugs to either be destroyed or properly disposed of. We briefly discussed, let's see here, pending litigation in federal court that I'm sure you're all aware of, that has been turned over to our insurance pool for representation. And then also I sent Andy Landuski a letter about whether the city can or cannot use residency for preferential reasons in the civil service area. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Any question for law director? John, could you, I know, I believe on the email that you had, a copy of the email that you had sent out regarding the solicitation, could you, just for the viewing audience, those people who might be looking at, there were some organizations that are exempt, I believe, like some, there aren't there some exemptions to the solicitation? I think like churches, you know, people from, if you could just tell, so the people would know which ones those are?
Yeah, we did have an exemption for religious activities, but we have included them in the temporary suspension also because we're looking at this as just a health issue during this pandemic. Didn't want to pick and choose whether it was a commercial or non-commercial solicitation because either of those groups could be carrying a COVID-19 virus when they show up at a citizen's door. And we just want to avoid that for now.
What about, what about, you know, we're getting, this is, we're getting into that campaign season where people do go and hang stuff on doorknobs or go knocking door to door. What's the status of that as well?
I haven't talked specifically about that with the city manager, but our intent would be, they of course can hang things on doors, signs in yard, that type of thing. But the direct face-to-face contact would also be covered under our temporary suspension.
Okay.
We're trying to make this as.
Tight.
As possible. You know, we don't want one group saying, well, you let this group do that, but you don't let us do that. So because it's, it's a pandemic that affects everybody, no matter what the issue might be, we want to suspend contact face-to-face. Because as you know in the news, somebody talking to you even with a mask, there can still be a spread going on. So masks help reduce the spread, they don't eliminate the spread.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any, any questions for law director? Here now, thank you, sir. We will go to the next report, clerk of council, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number 25 dash 2020.
Any questions for clerk of council? Here now, then we will go to item number nine, new business, and there is a motion.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only, ordinance number 22 dash 2020.
Okay.
We moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring a reading in full on two separate occasions and read for the first time by title only, ordinance number 22 dash 2020. Any discussion? Here now, would the clerk call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
The motion to suspend passes six zero. First item on the new business is item A, ordinance number 22 dash 2020. Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 22 dash 2020, an ordinance determining to reduce and reset it by special assessment levy for the purpose of constructing certain improvements and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion?
I would move adoption of ordinance number 22 dash 2020.
Okay.
We moved in second that would, ordinance 22 dash 2020. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is our annual dealing with the special assessments that are levied on the mall property that is done to pay the remaining outstanding bonds on it. The TIF agreement, it was eliminated in 2009. So these assessments are fully funding that bond payment. And I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Here now, the clerk calling the roll on ordinance 22 dash 2020.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Ordinance 22 dash 2020 passed six zero. Next item on the agenda would be item, would be a motion.
Yes, I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number 26 dash 2020 by title only.
Second.
We moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring a reading in full and read resolution 26 2020 by title only. Is there any discussion? Here now, yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, I'm fine, go ahead.
Would the clerk then please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
The motion to suspend passes six zero. Next item on the agenda would be item B, resolution number 26 2020. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number 26 dash 2020, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against various properties by the City of Forest Park Community Development Department.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 26 dash 2020.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution 26 dash 2020. Is there a discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yeah, this is just part of our annual physical responsibility of placing special assessment on properties where the city spends general public dollars to correct or clean up otherwise private properties that are fallered and disrepair or code violation. We currently have about 15 properties representing about $4,532.50. And although some of these may be paid off before the lien are actually filed. And so I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Here now, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 26 20?
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Resolution 26 20 passes six zero. Next item is item C, resolution 27 dash 2020. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number 27 dash 2020, a resolution amending the resolution number 20 dash 2020, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Kid Coffee and the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Whereas resolution number 20 dash 2020 passed on June 15, 2020, awarded a $5,000 redevelopment grant to Kid Coffee to be paid in 2020. And whereas the City of Forest Park has identified the recruitment of new businesses and redevelopment under performing commercial properties as priorities for its redevelopment campaign. And whereas Kid Coffee has proposed a project that accomplishes both of these goals and that Kid Coffee, QM, will now invest approximately $1,300,000 on the purchase and renovation of a vacant building located at 1194 West Kemper Road. And whereas Kid Coffee will bring a minimum of 10 new full-time and four part-time jobs to the City of Forest Park. And whereas an incentive is required to make our city cost competitive with others under consideration. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that resolution number 20 dash 2020 is hereby amended to change the amount of the redevelopment grant to be provided to Kid Coffee as well as the location of the project. This amendment replaces the terms of the original resolution reflecting a change in the size and scope of the project. Section two, that the Council of the City of Forest Park hereby gives its consent for the city manager to enter into an incentive agreement with Kid Coffee to complete a $1.3 million redevelopment project at 1194 West Kemper Road that will result in the retention of or creation of 10 full-time or part-time jobs. In return, the City of Forest Park will provide Kid Coffee with a redevelopment grant in the amount of $35,000 to be paid in 2020. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Any motion?
Yes, I move adoption of resolution number 27 dash 2020.
Second.
We moved in second that we adopt resolution 27 dash 2020. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, while the, the resolution spells out sort of the monetary and numbers of this, I do want to explain that this came out of an earlier resolution to bring Kid Coffee into the community to do a processing, production down on Northland Boulevard. That fell through and instead they are coming to renovate completely the, to renovate the Fitworth property on Wynton Road. And they will bring the processing here, but they will also bring a retail store. They will bring a, like an incubator where they will teach people how to, entrepreneurs, how to open up other types of projects like this. And they will also have this as their headquarters. So this is a very nice program. It will also include, as Paul had described in the work session, a facade change. And it will also mean that they will purchase this property, which also shows the commitment of their desire to invest in this community. So I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Here now, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution 27 2020?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Resolution 27 2020 passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item D, a motion, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss personnel matters related to union contract negotiation.
Second.
Then moved in second that we will convene into executive session to discuss personnel matters related to union contract negotiations. Is there any discussion?
No.
Here now, would the clerk call the roll on the motion to convene into the regular session?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
The motion to convene an executive session passes six zero. At this time, I would like to state that during the executive session, no official business will be taken. And when that executive session is finished, we will come back and adjourn the executive session and reconvene in the regular council meeting. And I do not anticipate that there will be any additional business in the regular council meeting. Okay, first of all, I would need a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the regular meeting, Councilwoman Holt.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular council meeting.
Second.
Then moved in second that we adjourn the executive session and reconvene into the council meeting. Is there any discussion?
None.
Sally, I take this as just a voice vote, right?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting aye.
Aye.
Poles, now we're back in the regular meeting. If there, if, does anyone have anything else for the good of the order in the regular meeting? Sally, I will be by tomorrow to sign anything that I need to sign.
Okay.
And I do, tomorrow, as usual, in case you didn't know, don't know, every Tuesday at 11 o'clock, I am in a meeting with the council commissioners. And I believe that Chief Jones basically takes the lead on all of the COVID stuff for us. And I know that Andy, the website has been updated with information. So it's a good place to go for our citizens to go and look if you want real-time information. Anything else from anybody else?
With respect to that, isn't there a pop-up testing tomorrow at Forest Chapel?
It's on the fifth.
Yeah, I think it's the fifth.
That's tomorrow, correct?
No, tomorrow's the fourth.
Wednesday, okay, Wednesday.
Andy, do you have the times for that?
I think it's 12 to 4.
Yeah, I think she's right.
12 to 4 at Forest Chapel.
Yep.
And it's free, right?
Yes.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Anything else for the good of the order? Here now, thank you all. You all stay safe and have a good one.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Bye.